Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, August 6th, City of Issaquah City Council meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask those who'd like to join the council, myself and the Pledge of Allegiance, to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is Special Business, ID 0313. This is a geotechnical evaluation and arborist report for a city-owned property west of Swedish Hospital. This is an informational item, and there will be no council action -- no council action is being sought at tonight's meeting. I'd like to invite Keith Niven, Economic and Development Services Director, to introduce this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, City Council. So I'm going to go through a quick presentation, and then I have representatives from both Goldar Associates and Tree Solutions here to give kind of a short -- I don't want to say "presentation" because I think that's overstating what they're going to do. Just a description of what they did as far as part of this process, and then open it up for council questions if there are any. So in -- back in -- way back in 2017, we purchased a piece of property from King County. It was a surplus parcel, and it's located west of Swedish Hospital. It actually goes from the top up at the Highlands level of elevation, and then this is all slope coming down, and then this is down on the valley floor. And aside from this, which King County used as a maintenance yard, the balance of the property is forested. Soon after we purchased the property, we were contacted by the Issaquah School District who identified that they had some interest in potentially buying a portion of the upper part of the property from the city for a future elementary school. And so we had some conversations with the city council, and the city council said, "Well, before we would be willing to consider selling the property, we would like to know some more about the property and also what a school might potentially do on the property." So you identified four things that you wanted to know more about. Traffic, so what would be the traffic impacts if an elementary school is located on that property? Geology, could that property hold an elementary school? Trees, what really was -- we know the site is forested, but having a better understanding of what the composition of the trees were would be helpful for the council. And then views, if there was an elementary school placed at the top of that property, what would be the view impacts from that on the rest of the community? So where we are today is the school district commissioned geotech analysis by Associated Earth Science, and they also hired Arbor Info LLC to study -- what they found on the site was that a certain portion of the trees appeared like they were diseased. And so they really hired this group to look at the area where some of the trees looked like they're having some trouble, and actually identified that they had laminated root rot. And I'm not going to spend much time talking about that because I don't know much about it. We hired Goldar Associates to take a look at the AESI geotech study, and then we hired Tree Solutions to really provide an arborist report as well as look at the laminated root rot issue. And I've got representatives from both of those firms here this evening. So I'm going to stop here on this aerial photograph, and I'm going to start by introducing Tyler Button from Tree Solutions, and he can describe kind of what -- quickly what they went through in walking through the property and some of the recommendations that they're making as part of the study that's attached to the memo this evening.
Thank you, Keith. Council, I just wanted to know if you'd like to hear both presentations, or would you like to have questions after arborist and after geotechnical separately? Ms. Mertz?
I'm going to suggest that we have the one report and ask questions, and then the second report and ask questions.
Is that okay with everybody? Let's go that way. Thanks. Come on up.
Hello. So my name is Tyler Button. I work at Tree Solutions. We -- over the course of about a week or so, we did a study in sort of this area. And what we did was we assessed each tree individually for health and structure, and also went through and tried to identify disease pockets in the area. We identified --
Tyler, I'm going to get you to move a little closer to the mic if you can.
Sorry. We identified two areas of the disease pockets within the area that we were looking at. And in the previous study, it had -- samples had been sent to WSU Extension, and they had positively identified laminated root rot. So we weren't questioning any of that because it's out there. So from there, we sort of put together a full table with all of the trees listed in it. We also tagged the trees so that every tree can be found, and with management or one management practices are implemented, each tree can be found that needs to have management The typical management options for laminated root rot, if you go by Forest Service guidelines, they are more directed towards preserving timber in timber stands. So their suggestion is typically remove trees in the affected areas and remove trees within a buffer zone of the tallest tree on the edge of the area as well, as well as pulling stumps. And with this happening, you're supposed to have pulled out a majority of the diseased tissue at that point. However, the fungus can live in the soil for a very long period of time. My boss today said upwards of 50 years. So if it would be replanted, which is always the suggestion that we give, suggested species can be -- or we can suggest species that are resistant to laminated root rot. The other option is to monitor the trees. There is a new development over there to the east, and one of the pockets was somewhat close to that area, sort of in this area here. And another option is to monitor for trees that are in decline and dying and remove or snag those trees, and then replace as you'd remove trees with the disease-resistant species. I think that's about all I have.
We'll see if they have questions. Council, any questions on the arborist report? Councilmember Ray.
So, interesting. So how extensive is the laminated root rot in the parcel you looked at?
So, let's see here. I don't remember if I have an exact count of the number of trees. The area is kind of a rough outline in the report that we have submitted because we did a GPS walk of the area, and it didn't capture the exact edges. But we could -- so, and it's also one of those things where it can spread, and the disease won't show any symptoms. So the areas that we found were this area in here. You might actually even be able to see there's some browning in that area, and then sort of this area in this location as well. So it's really difficult to determine the exact extent of what is affected.
How contagious is it?
It will spread.
Okay.
And that's about all I can say. Once it's in the area, it's basically going to be in that area, and it spreads through the root system. So it will spread from one tree to another.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Yes, and you just looked at the upper part, the bench on top, correct? You didn't go down slope at all?
Yes, we just looked at the upper portion because that was where the school district was looking, so.
Any other questions? Councilperson Mertz.
So if we do nothing, what does the forest do over time?
So over an extended period of time, the trees would die off that are there right now because it is primarily Douglas fir, which is very susceptible to this. And naturally, resistant species could come in. With the region that we're in and the amount of invasives that there are, I might expect some invasives to come in, such as invasive blackberry, ivy, that type of thing as well, holly. There's that stuff -- there are those species intermixed within the site at low levels currently. So as the canopy would die back, it's very possible that those species would start to take over.
So we'd wind up with just a big field of blackberries?
Hopefully not.
Well, without doing any -- I mean, in the absence of doing anything else.
It is possible, yes.
Okay. And the follow-on question, do we have, given that this is a disease that spreads, what, if any, responsibility do we have, given that there's forested land adjacent? Do property owners have a responsibility to address root rot when it's identified?
I would have to get back to you on that. That's something that I would have to talk to somebody else that I work with about. I'm not as familiar with the legal aspects, so.
Is that because people normally deal with it when it shows up? I'm trying to understand if there's any problem with not dealing with it for a while.
Yes, and again, that's something that I would have to discuss with other arborists that I work with that are more involved with the legal side of things.
Setting aside the legal for a second, what do people typically do in this situation?
I'm not exactly sure. This is the first time I personally have dealt with laminated root rot in my career so far. So again, I could go and discuss with my coworkers and --
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Petis.
Thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to clarify, you had said that this can spread to another tree, but that tree could not show signs for a period of time?
Yes.
Is there a sort of an estimate on the period of time? So it could look like a healthy tree, but actually it had spread and it wasn't showing any sign?
So it can look like a healthy tree. As it's in decline, it will -- it can show signs or symptoms, including a sparseness in the canopy of the needles, a yellowing of the canopy, tipped dieback on the branches. So those are the typical symptoms that we will see. So it is, like, once it's getting into a more advanced stage, it is a little bit easier to see that it is infected, which is one of the reasons why the Forest Service suggests removing trees in an area outside of, like, the area that you can actually see it, is because about 100 feet away from the visible tree, it's possible that another tree is infected.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Ramos, and then Councilmember Hunt.
So you really have two choices here, a Forest Service method of cutting and replanting, or a longer-term monitoring of, you know, as you get some dieback areas, you can then cut those areas out, let some sun in, so you can start replanting something from below the canopy of a more resistant species. In the long term, keep a -- basically build your own successional forest canopy coming up, correct?
Yes. Yep.
Councilmember Hunt?
That was very similar to my question, was just about the potential phasing of, rather than the Forest Service removing and removing stumps. And you had mentioned also snags, which would be like, sort of like, a very large tree stump, and those are important for wildlife. So I just wondered about the pros and cons of a more phased approach versus -- but it was very similar to Councilmember Ramos's question.
So in my opinion, the pros and cons, so the pros for a phased approach is you'll have less of that clear cutting in on the site. And when we were out there, we even spoke to people who were looking at homes in that new development, and they're appreciating that there are trees right there. So pros are there will be more of a continuous forest cover. And then, I mean, the con with that is you will still have the laminated root rot without a full treatment. And basically the opposite, I guess, for the other one, so.
Any more questions? Councilmember Ramos.
Just, I'm sorry, I have to jump in. Just to say something, so laminated root rot is a normal occurring thing. It's everywhere in the forest generally. It spreads when trees are weakened enough to get hit, just like any other disease. And so it may hit pockets here or there, it may spread. If it stands strong, it doesn't spread very far. That's just part of the normal forest process. Hits dying trees more easily, full, healthy trees can sit right in the middle of it and not get affected. There's that whole process with laminated root rot. So I just want to bring that out and say that. So it's pretty much there. It's part of the natural forest decaying process.
Yes, thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Tyler. This is an information item tonight, but it does sound like council has some additional questions about the future of the forest.
Yes. So we're moving from trees to dirt and rocks. So one of the things about this is that when the school district did their geotech report, their study on the property, their consultants identified some concerns with the property that ultimately led to the school district withdrawing their interest in looking for other locations. So as the property owner, we felt it was important to have one of our geotech engineers take a look at the study and give us their opinions on what they read. So I have Clay Johnson and Josh Hanson with Goldar Associates here, and I think they're going to give you guys a brief overview of kind of what they saw in the report that AESI did.
Good afternoon. My name's Clay Johnson. I'm a geologist with Goldar Associates, and myself and another colleague did a reconnaissance of the site in 2017. We were conducting geological reconnaissance, just walking through the site, and so we had some preliminary information before reviewing the AESI report. Generally, we were in agreement with the methods that AESI took for addressing, assessing slope stability concerns. However, we had some disagreement on a couple of points, I guess, two. Principally, we had reviewed different geologic mapping. The AESI report looked at a geologic map of the area from the '90s, which has been updated in 2012. And the 2012 mapping is in general agreement with what we observed on the site, which is glacial sediments that are -- there's more of a layered sequence as you move up the slope, as opposed to AESI's report, which had a draping of a single glacial advance outwash unit. So they stated in their report that they were in agreement with the previous geologic mapping from the '90s. The other difference that we had was a historic landslide that AESI identified in the northern portion of the property, and we didn't see evidence for that when we were on the site or in any of the documents that we reviewed for a history of the site. There's an arcuate landform on the kind of northern end of the site that butts up against the Reed Detention Pond, but we walked through that and interpreted that landform as more of an erosional landform as opposed to a landslide. So those are really the major differences, and happy to answer questions on anything you'd like.
Thank you, Clay. Questions on the geotechnical review? No questions. Thanks very much, Keith. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on our agenda this evening is audience comments, and we have a pretty significant audience here this evening. I'm going to go through some general guidelines. Audience members can address the council at this time. The guidelines for public participation are being shown up on the overhead this evening. Those who have signed up on the sign-up sheet will be called forward first, and if you did not sign up, I will make sure to ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. If you're here as part of a group, and I see signs, so I know we have at least one group here this evening, it would be great if you can identify a spokesperson or two from your group and have them address the council. All those audience members that support the points that are being spoken, please raise your hands after so the council can understand which item you're coming to support and which information you're supporting. And if you would like to address the council and add additional new information to what the spokesperson has said, then please come up and address at the dais as well. We've allowed five minutes for public comments this evening. I just wanted to add in a couple of changes. I've decided that it, with the council president, that it would be good for us to put the guidelines for public participation up on the overhead. We have had them on the agenda before. I just want to make sure that everyone who's coming up to speak has read through those bullets and is comfortable with our guidelines for engagement. And when you come up to the lectern, if you can speak into the microphone, state your name, address, relationship to the city, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you've come with written comments, please feel free to hand them in to the clerk. And I want to thank you all for coming this evening because the council recognizes how difficult it is to get up on camera and on TV and address your council. So thank you very much for coming tonight. Tisha, who do we have on our sign-up list?
Kristi Triple. Good evening, council members and Mayor Polly. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. It's a pleasure to be here. I come tonight to share a story, a quick story, and a thank you. So our office is at 1595 Northwest Gilman Boulevard, Suite 1, here in Issaquah. We're close to SR 900 and next to the Shell Station and across the street from the Meadow Shopping Center. So just about every two weeks, there's, two weeks or so, give or take, there's a car accident from those trying to exit or enter the Meadow Shopping Center. And so given my office is directly across from that, I often see what happens. And a late Friday afternoon, I heard another accident, and I looked over to my right and thought, gosh, I wonder if I need to call 911 or if they're okay, if it was just a simple rear end. And thank goodness, I took the time to look because there was a SUV flying over the sidewalk, the landscape area, in between two trees and a large rhododendron. So it completely cleared that. Typically, this is where my boss parks her car. And so gratefully, no cars were in the way. No one was walking through the parking lot. But we have, thank goodness, again, the old-school curb stops that people complain about, that they might be a trip hazard, that stopped the SUV from hitting our building, and it bounced back several feet. So meanwhile, while all of this was happening, I made a run for the center of the building, thinking for sure it was going to be crashed. So glad no one was hurt and the people involved in the accident, we were able to help them call 911, and no one was hurt in the process. But the point being, really grateful to see that the city is focusing some attention on Gilman Boulevard and its safety and kind of the long-term use. Because as it evolves, those kinds of accidents, when we know typically are happening over and over again, it's an opportunity to address the safety aspect, but also commerce and all of the things that happen along Gilman Boulevard. And I think also with Jackson Shell Station being in for permit for redevelopment, it's a good time to look, take a look at that end of Gilman Boulevard as well. So thank you for all that you do and the opportunity to speak, and appreciate it.
Thank you, Kristi. Tisha, who's next?
Sigrid Luellen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Sigrid Luellen, and I'm a resident of Issaquah and live at 100 Timber Ridge Way Northwest in the Talus community. I would like to support that the city of Issaquah and its partners explore the acquisition of the Burksma property. We love our green mountains in Issaquah. It was a deciding factor for my husband and me to move here. Our hikes in the Cool Woods regularly contribute to our health and well-being. We are the beneficiaries of decades of environmental advocacy that has preserved our mountains while also forging constructive agreements with developers that still allowed for the explosive growth of housing in this area. Our neighboring cities have not managed to do the same in protecting their green spaces. The steepness of the Burksma property and its geology do not easily lend themselves to housing development. As a result, the green space destruction and environmental damage that would ensue in the development of the property for the roads and housing is out of proportion with the benefit gained. I imagine we would lose most of the green face along Newport Way and up the mountain, pushing the green gateway feeling further out of town. Once cut, these trees and vistas are lost forever. The Burksma property location is unique because of its connection to Cougar Mountain and its proximity to the Issaquah Transit Center. The property acquisition may allow for future trail access through the Burksma property to Cougar Mountain. Then hikers, like my sons, who come now by car, could come by bus from Issaquah without having to wait for connecting bus and start hiking into the green space and Cougar Mountain. That would be awesome. Please explore the acquisition of the Burksma property.
Thank you, Sigrid. Tisha? And of the about 35 or so people in attendance tonight, two-thirds, three-quarters, almost all have got their hands in the air. Next is Joe Werner.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Joe Werner. We live at 1230 Oakwood Place Northwest on the Newport Way Northwest corridor. I want to address two ABs tonight. 7641 Newport Way Tibbetts Creek Bridge Reinforcement Project and 7662 Support for the City Role in Open Space Acquisition, i.e., the Burksma property acquisition. And with regards to 7662, thank you, City Council, for voting on this resolution this evening and proposing it because it's a good cause to keep Cougar Mountain forested. Secondly, on 7641, the Newport Way Tibbetts Creek Bridge Reinforcement Project, there seems to be some confusion in the city or around the city, or both, as to what it really means. On the one hand, in May, the city announced through, I believe it was Issaquah Insider, that there was a report by the state and/or the federal government that the bridge needed to be strengthened, and that further traffic westbound from SR 900 onto Newport Way would be limited to lighter vehicles, not construction-laden equipment. However, over the course of June and July, I reported on several occasions, and I'm not the only citizen that reported heavy-laden construction equipment going westbound on Newport Way Northwest from SR 900. Then there was conflicting reports or conclusions. Public Works Department submitted the proposal, 7662, and part of the commentary was that the bridge needed to be reinforced. Otherwise, our city's emergency equipment couldn't use SR 900 to get up Newport Way on a westbound motion. But then city administration said, oh, the bridge is just fine. But then city administration said, "Oh, the bridge is just fine. We only have to strengthen it because the government said we had to strengthen it." So, I recommend there be a consolidation of city's opinion as to what really is going on. And if the federal or the state government is requiring it, what's the time limit? Because down the road, there's going to be some improvements to SR-900, and down the road could mean anything from three years from now to 30 years from now. So, when does that bridge need to be reinforced? And is there a danger for our emergency vehicles to use it? So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
John Macduff.
Yeah, I'm John Macduff. I live here in the city of 620 Southeast Bush Street, and I am in favor of this resolution on the Burgsma property, and hope you are too. I have one other, just quick comment, and that has to do with this laminated root rot. Thing that impressed me when I looked into it was that, as the name implies, it's the roots that are rotting away, which you end up with a dead tree that has no root system there to hold it in place, so it's very susceptible to being blown over. That's all.
Thank you. Tisha?
No one further has signed up to speak.
I'm seeing Geraldine in the back. Would you like to come up, Geraldine, and speak?
My name is Geraldine Carey, and I live at 955 Seventeenth Avenue Northwest Issaquah. The location is right on the corner of Newport Way and SR-900. So, all the things that are happening in that corner, the Burgsma property and the Tibbetts Bridge are impacting me. I was at one of the meetings a couple weeks ago when I requested the city to look carefully about fixing the inside of the culvert underneath Tibbetts Bridge. And I contacted Sheldon Lynn, and I looked on the Internet to see what they do with old culverts under roads. They don't tear them out. If they take and reinforce it like it's recommended, they can do extensions onto the roads. So, in the future, when they do Newport Way and they widen at 10 or 20 feet, or 10 feet on each side, they can just do a cement extension, is my understanding. I didn't ask Sheldon, but that's what the website indicated. So, I support, I support the repair on the Tibbetts culvert. Especially, I read the messages on the Internet from the Issaquah Fire Department, and they said they would not use the bridge, and I think that's really important for the residents. So, I support the, taking the money and repairing it as long as you can say we're not going to tear it down in 10 or 15 years. And I also am, again, in support of acquiring Burgsma for the city to enjoy its open space. Thank you.
Thank you, Geraldine. And again, about three-quarters of the hands gathered tonight went up. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? Oh, gentleman right there. Broke it, you bought it.
Hi, my name is George Potter. I live on Old Black Nugget Road, which is outside of the city limits in unincorporated King County. But I am a member of the Board of Issaquah Alps Trails Club, and I wish to state that the club is strongly in favor of the city looking at the acquisition of the Burgsma property for its value in trails and forest and an expansion of the Cougar Mountain Preserve. Thank you.
Thank you, George. All the hands and signs are up again. Anyone else wishing to address council this evening?
Kay Haynes, 2830 Northwest Pine Cone Drive. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm going to keep it very short. I know you have a long agenda. I don't need to go over all of the reasons that we're here tonight. You know those reasons well. And thank you, Sigrid, for that beautiful explanation, that rehash of our purpose for being. I just want to say I'm here on behalf of the Save Cougar Mountain Association and our 2,250 active members who wholeheartedly support the resolution going forward, and wishing to express our gratitude to the council. We know this is a long and difficult subject. We know this is only the first step. We're very aware of that. But I did want to convey to you the incredible response we got from people I've never even heard of before, heard from before, when they saw the possibility of something happening on Cougar Mountain. You have a lot of people very avidly following this subject, and we do thank you for your work. We're very grateful, and we appreciate the opportunity to share this with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Signs and hands. Is there anyone else who would like to address their council this evening? Second call, anyone wishing to address council? And a third and final call. Thank you very much for your comments this evening. We heard from several of you about the resolution this evening on the open space, potential open space acquisition, Burgsma property, also about some traffic concerns on Gilman Boulevard, a bit about the Newport Bridge, and a little bit about Swedish forest and laminated root rot. So, thank you for bringing all of your comments and concerns to us this evening. Audience comments is now closed, and we will move to committee and regional reports. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have four meetings to report on tonight, and they're all related to water. So, the first one is on July 18th. I attended the Cascade Water Alliance Finance and Management Meeting. We talked about a number of issues. The first one was a affordability study, looking at the affordability of utilities in the Cascade Water Service region. And this is a study that would be, an academic study that would be funded, be performed by Texas A&amp;M, and it would inform the members of Cascade Water Alliance about freight structure and affordability options going forward as well. We also discussed the RCFC, which is the Regional Capital Facilities Charge. This is a charge that's assessed to new members as they connect to the water system. And the fee has been constant for a long time, and we talked about the probable need that that will go up. So, we did not make any decisions. These are committee meetings, but we did talk about that, and we also talked about the budget, which will be discussed further later on in the summer. And then, there will be no August meetings for Cascade Water Alliance, including the committees. So, the next meeting of the Cascade Water Alliance Finance and Management will be on September 19th at the Cascade Water Alliance Office in Bellevue. And the next meeting is Cascade Water Alliance Resource Management Meeting. So, we discussed some amendments to the Lake Taps Property Management Policy. They've learned over time some, some things about the property management, and so that basically just update to their policy of how they interact with people that own properties on Lake Taps. And then, we also talked about the need for GIS software, new GIS software, and a way of managing GIS assets. Their software, they, they have a lot of GIS assets, and they need newer software, and that software is improving all the time. The next meeting of the Cascade Water Alliance Resource Management will be on September 13th at the Cascade Water Alliance Office in Bellevue. And then, I also attended the Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting, which was on July 25th. And we talked about the issues that I just mentioned. So, we authorized that GIS software expenditure, the affordability study, as well as the changes to the policy management. And we talked about budget, but that will be, that will be discussed further later in the summer, and we did not make a decision or take action on that. Next meeting of the Cascade Water Alliance Board will meet on September 26th. And the last meeting is the Salmon Recovery Council for Wyra 8, which met on July 19th. We recommended some investments in technical and programmatic priorities, so different studies to understand the health of our salmon population. And then, we also saw some presentations. We saw a presentation from King Conservation District on programs that align with salmon recovery, and they talked a lot about how urban forestry is actually really important for salmon populations, and I think that's something that's really important in the specific case of Issaquah as well. They also do, so this is King Conservation District, they do a lot of work with private landowners, and they talked about some of those programs. And we saw a presentation from Puget Sound Regional Council on Vision 2050 and salmon recovery, how that, how that intersects. And then, we heard a success story about the Cedar River Salmon Journey Naturalist Program, which is a educational program and part of the Seattle Aquarium, and they do education about the life cycle of salmon. And the next meeting of Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Council will be September 20th at the Mercer Island Community Center, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Services and Safety Committee will meet on August 14th at 6:30 here in council chambers. The agenda will have a single item on it. We have Agenda Bill 7640, which is amending the school impact fees. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board will not be meeting in August, and the next Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting will be September 13th at 4:00 PM on the Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Mayor. The Council Infrastructure Committee last month, and their item of business will be on regular business tonight, so we'll talk about that then. The next meeting is next Thursday, the 16th, next week, 6:30 here in council chambers. The agenda is just being put together as we speak.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstone?
Thank you. The Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board did not meet in August, so they stuck to their yearly practice of taking August off. Good for them. But, so our next meeting will be September 6th in Seattle, and I don't know the agenda yet.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Council's Land and Shore Committee will not meet in August, so our next meeting will be the first Thursday in September. That's my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Bateese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sound Cities Association is also taking the month of August off. Amazing, there are organizations that do those sorts of things. And so, their next meeting will be Wednes, our next meeting will be Wednesday, September 12th. In addition, there is a GNPC meeting later in September that I will report on as we get closer.
Thank you. That's great. I have a fairly light report this evening for the mayor's report. I have no regional meetings to report out. Thank you to Councilmember Hunt for doing double-duty water representation this month and attending a bunch of Cascade Water Alliance meetings while I was out of town. Much appreciated. I do have a couple of updates, though. I think it's pretty well-known by the crowd here, but I'm going to say it anyway. Cougar Mountain Burgsma update. City Council will be discussing a council resolution at this evening's meeting, sponsored by councilmembers Goodman, Ray, and Hunt. Eastlake-Samish Parkway, I'd like to provide some information on an upcoming road closure. For two weeks, from August 6th through August 20th, Eastlake-Samish Parkway is scheduled to be fully closed to vehicular and bicycle traffic for construction on Zaccus Creek Fish Passage and Stream Restoration Project. It's a City of Samish project, and it includes replacing the existing culvert under the parkway and restoring approximately 400 lineal feet of Zaccus Creek upstream of the culvert. Preserve Providence Heights Appeal of the city's SEPA decision and demolition permit for the Providence Heights campus. On July 20th, the city's hearing examiner denied the Preserve Providence Heights appeal. The demolition permit will be amended to add an additional condition related to management of materials potentially containing PCBs. National Night Out. Tomorrow night, Tuesday, August 7th, cities all over with their police departments will be celebrating National Night Out. I'd like to personally invite you to join me and the council down at the Issaquah Police Department from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. It's next to Memorial Field. After that, I'm going to be heading over to the Concerts on the Green at 7:00 PM, Concert on the Green Series, with several council members, hoping to enjoy the great summer weather and serve a treat for our residents. The last project update I have is East Sunset Way Road Improvements. East Sunset Way is scheduled for maintenance August 13th and 14th. It includes repaving of the road and performing shoulder restoration. It's going to be starting at 7:00 AM on August 13th. East Sunset Way will be closed from Second Avenue Southeast by the fire station to the I-90 Exit 18 off-ramps for 36 continuous hours, including overnight, until the project is complete. Cyclists and pedestrians will be able to utilize Sixth Avenue Southeast to get around the project, accessing the East Sunset Trailhead and also the Highlands. The main detour route will be I-90 and Exit 17 to Front Street. To access homes and businesses in the work zone, please use Second Avenue Southeast and adjacent side streets. All side streets accessing East Sunset Way will be closed at East Sunset Way for construction activities and will not allow for cut-through traffic. There are maps and detailed information online at www.issaquahwa.gov/pmp. And that is it for the mayor's report this evening. Proceeding to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the consent calendar will be considered together and approved in one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as listed in tonight's agenda. Sorry, consent calendar.
Consent calendar.
As listed in tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to regular business. The first item under regular business is AB 7641, Newport Way Tibbetts Creek Bridge Reinforcement Project. This is to authorize additional funding, and it's coming out of the Council Infrastructure Committee. I'd like to invite Sheldon Lynn, Public Works Engineering Director, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. My name is Sheldon Lynn. I'm the Director for Public Works Engineering. As the mayor mentioned, this is an Agenda Bill 7641, coming back from the Council Infrastructure Committee. Essentially, the policy question in front of the city council is, is that shall funds be expended to reinforce the Newport Way Bridge over Tibbetts Creek, with a recommendation from the administration to do so? The request essentially, not essentially, but the request is to fund $175,000 for the design and construction to reinforce the Newport Way Bridge over Tibbetts Creek. And, along with that, to authorize the execution of design and construction contracts as needed to accomplish the work. Little bit of background. The bridge is located just west of SR-900 at the intersection of Newport and SR-900. So, it's located right here where Tibbetts Creek crosses the Newport Way. The bridge was constructed in 2001. It's been inspected every two years in accordance with federal rules, and last inspection was in September of 2017. Since its construction, none of the inspections have identified any damage associated with the structure or degradation of the structure. The bridge is considered safe. However, FHWA has changed the rules in which the calculations are done for calculating the load ratings. And load ratings are meant to calculate the loads that the bridge can carry for the heavier types of vehicles, trucks, buses, fire engines, things of that sort. When they do that, those mandates are handed down through the state to the agencies that manage their bridges. WashDOT notified the bridges, the bridge engineer for the city of Issaquah in 2014 of the of the need to perform the load rating calculations on its bridges. The timeframe for when those calculations were to be done depended upon the type of structure it was and the like. And this bridge was expected or needed to have the calculations done by the end of 2017, as well as a number of other bridges in town. The rest of the bridges will have to be calculated out by the end of 2022. Unfortunately, in 2014, the city's bridge engineer passed away as well. There was some lost information. The city learned of the requirement to do these little calculations again in the latter Additionally, we were also informed by WashDOT that the bridges within the one mile of the interstate, in this case, I-90, must also have these calculations done as they pertain to emergency service vehicles. And that was a requirement of what's known as the FAST Act of 2015, which was signed into law by the President of the United States in December of 2015. The state has given the city some time to make reinforcements to the bridge, so as not to require the posting of the bridges. The new calculations that were done for the Newport Way Bridge, based upon the FHWA guidance and Ashdod manuals, identified that the bridge would not take the loads of the heavier trucks, which were newly designed and built, as they distribute the loads differently on the structure itself. Again, the bridge is safe. It's not damaged in its current state. The options that the administration considered were twofold. One, reinforce the bridge now. The reinforcing of the bridge would be with an epoxy-type resin that is highly reinforced with a very strong fiber mesh. This application is permanent. The structure will not have to be replaced when the road gets reconstructed through the area. Or, as Ms. Carey mentioned earlier, if the structure has to be widened, it can be widened without removing or replacing it. To do this work, the work has to be done in a period of time, which we commonly call the fish window. But that's the time period which the Department of Fish and Wildlife will allow work to happen over and within a stream. Should that have to occur and be extended, fisheries will make a decision upon the request of the city whether or not, you know, based on fish migration and other conditions of what's going on, whether they're going to allow the extension of the fish window. Currently, we don't anticipate needing an extension of the fish window. The other option that the city has in front of it is to post load limits. Load limits being posted on the bridge will have a whole host of impacted users. City snowplows, vector trucks, trucks that haul material and heavy equipment for the operations department, as well as parks. It affects other heavy vehicles used for local deliveries, including construction The resultant of that is that there's a significant impact to the quality and cost of level of service that the city provides with its services. For instance, if a snow event occurs, the Public Works Operations Department will have to go all the way around I-90, Lakemont, and come back to be able to plow Newport Way, as well as plow the hills of Southeast 54th, Village Park Drive, and the other steep hills that are located off of Newport Way. That's just one example. Eastside Fire and Rescue has been consulted, and in your packet there's a memo with a letter that Eastside Fire and Rescue wrote to the city that supports the reinforcement of the bridge now. In the committee, there was some discussion and questions about being able to post the bridge with the weight limits, but exempt emergency vehicles. I mentioned the FAST Act of 2015 earlier in my presentation. That act that was passed by the president precludes the option of posting an exemption for emergency vehicles. And the reason for that is because the FAST Act contains some language in there that says with, basically, within a mile of the interstate, if a bridge load calculation shows that emergency vehicles' loads need to be posted, then we will have to post the load limits for emergency vehicles as well, not just other types of trucks and vehicles. With that, the recommendation from the administration is to direct the Finance Director to include $175,000 in a subsequent 2018 budget amendment for the Tibbetts Creek Bridge Reinforcement Project utilizing street operating fund. The authorization and authorizing the administration to enter into design and construction contracts for the Tibbetts Creek Bridge Reinforcement.
Thank you, Sheldon.
If there's any questions.
Questions? Councilmember Ray.
I'll go. So what's the timeline that we have from the state to make the repairs or make the reinforcements or post the weight limits? What's the timeline there?
The normal timeline is once the load calculations are done, typically there's a 90-day period, which WashDOT and FHWA would prefer to see the loads posted. We've been working with WashDOT, and essentially, we have probably late fall, towards the end of this year, to be able to do that. And then otherwise, we have to post. And given the conditions that we would have with the Fisheries Department, if we waited till then, then we would have to wait until next year when the fish window opens up again. So we would have to load post pretty much immediately if we didn't take this action tonight.
A couple more follow-ons. This one goes to the financial aspect of this. Did the administration look at other funding sources within the existing budget for the $175,000, as opposed to a new budget ask? Since we don't have real good visibility into your budget, just wondered if there was existing funds from salary savings or project savings or anything that could be repurposed in whole or in part to this?
We see interim city administrator getting closer to a microphone. So I think she's going to answer a question.
Great. Thank you very much. So a few different pieces of information to relay on that question. Were other funding options considered, was part of that question? And I can say that the first consideration was the fact that this was of the magnitude that required council approval to even initiate. So we knew we would be bringing this matter back before city council, as it's a capital-sized improvement. It's over the threshold that requires council action. And also entering into a contract commitment of this amount requires that approval. Having said that, the fund that we have considered for this is the appropriate fund, the street operating fund. That fund is also used for roadway maintenance, snow control, traffic control, and some of those activities have taken place so far this year, and some are yet to come, perhaps. And so we do reserve funds within the street operating fund in order to accommodate that. Having said that, that fund does fluctuate from year to year, depending on how much it is needed, how much snow we get, for example. And so it is common for us to balance out that fund toward the end of the year. Give you the easiest example is if it snows a lot, and we go over the snow budget within that fund, then we come back and we ask for an additional transfer to make the fund whole. Conversely, though, if we spend less, that money stays within the street operating fund, and then the subsequent year, we don't have to perhaps budget quite as much from the general fund, which is the primary funding source for the street fund. So because of the flexibility, the nature of the fund, and the need to come back before council to just get the authorization for the expenditure and the work, we did not consider other sources of funds. It would not have been appropriate to take from the public works operating budget, as they don't routinely have that kind of capacity within their budget. Did I answer?
I think so. No, I'm satisfied with that. So another question, you know, hands-on buzzers. Let's see if it rings in for this one. This one really deals with, we had a change in federal regulations in 2014, and I recognize we had some unforeseen circumstances. But it does raise an interesting question in my mind about how do we failure-proof the system? I mean, this is something we should have been discussing in my, the way I hear it, some time ago. So is there anything that, you know, Public Works Engineering or the administration's done to kind of backstop this kind of problem, so we don't find ourselves scrambling here?
We hold regular meetings at staff and have for a number of years, where communications happen about what's happening in the industry. Also, when we get notifications like this, typically those come up. In this instance, they didn't come up at the time, but we're constantly going to conferences, networking with WashDOT and FHWA, doing our best to keep abreast of changing regulatory environments. And WashDOT's really good about notifying us of these things. And so we're always in communication with their local programs folks and others to make sure that we are aware of these sorts of things.
Final question. This deals with, you mentioned, I think it was, remaining bridges by 2022?
Yes.
The inspection? So would we look to be putting some placeholders in, recognizing that there's a potential for some of those bridges to need remediation going forward? How do you deal with that?
We, over the years, over the past 15, 20 years, we've pretty much replaced all of our bridges. This was the only one that came up. We've done the low calculations for about half of our bridges. The other half are due by the end of 2022. We'll put in a budget request for probably the year 2022. So in 2021, when we develop it, we'll have some money in there to have those calculations done for 2022. And then pending the results, we'll probably come back and request council for authorization for either reinforcing or the administration will load post the bridges, depending upon what the results are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Other questions? Not seeing any, so I'm going to look for a motion. Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, and I'm going to precede this motion with a little explanation.
Great.
Okay. So as Chair of Infrastructure Committee, this was in our committee last month, and we talked about this. And to give a little background, basically, as it was discussed in committee, a number of questions came up that we, more information was desired. And the normal process would have been to keep that in committee another month. Staff would find those answers, bring them back the next month. This month, we would then go through that and then bring it back to council. We didn't do that because if we did that, it would have delayed the project beyond its ability to be done this year. So those things that we're trying to avoid here of posting load limits and causing those problems, because it would be too late in the year with temperature or the, how the repair needs or changes need to be done, and fish windows and all those kinds of things would have stopped it. It would have had to be done next year. So with that in mind, it's coming to council without a direct recommendation from the committee. So the recommendation from committee was, bring it here and bring your answers, which Sheldon's been presenting now, to those questions, so the whole council would hear those, and we could take action tonight rather than delaying it a month. So that's kind of the story on the timing-wise, otherwise it would have come with a recommendation. One more thing to add to that, I think, and I'm not feeling that the reason for this hasn't quite been clear yet. And that is that what's happened, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sheldon, is that vehicles have been redesigned over recent years, that the way they spread the load on the road has changed. Okay? So this is not something where Federal Highways Administration just said, oh, we're going to change the calculations. Bridges have to be different now. It was done because vehicles carry their weight differently, because they've been changed. So with that, when they go across a bridge, then that weight, the bridge has support, has to be supported differently. And so that's why we have new calculations, to understand that, okay, a vehicle that used to be rated on that bridge, the way it's spread out with axle weight and all that stuff, which I'm not an expert at, is different, and that bearing on the bridge is different. So with that design, Federal Highways said, we need to recalculate how those things are done. And that's what the change has come about. Regularly, this bridge would have passed its previous inspections, but it's within a mile of I-90, so that's an interstate highway, so all these other requirements are in place. So I just want to say, that's kind of the history, how we got there. We did the calculations. It turned out, because of that, it just doesn't meet that anymore. So it's not an arbitrary thing, it's a design thing, and it's definitely needed from the engineering side. So I want to clear that up as well. So with that, I'm going to make a motion. And I think you actually have it up there. I move to direct the Finance Director to include $175,000 in a subsequent 2018 budget amendment for the Tibbetts Creek Bridge Reinforcement Project utilizing the street operating fund, and authorize the administration to enter into design and construction contracts for the Tibbetts Creek Bridge Reinforcement Project.
Second?
Second.
That was a question. Sounded like a second. Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Along the funding question, it does say in the bill that a future transfer from the general fund may be required. So yes, we often move money from the general fund, that is the source, for the street operating fund. And then we do things like this, street repair, street maintenance, plow the roads, out of that money. So a good way of tracking what we're spending for these type of things. So it does say maybe. Got an update? I mean, do we, how are we doing? And is it likely to require something out of the general fund?
It's too early for us to tell, because we haven't gotten in the snow season, for example, or finished the construction season. So the street operating funds overall need is not yet known. We ask for the ability to add that to the budget amendment and the authorization to now go and spend. But as we bring that budget amendment forward, or the final budget amendment of the year, we will look at overall fund need and make a decision about the size, in particular, of the budget amendment and the transfer that's needed.
Okay, thank you. So this is allowing you to spend the money out of that fund for this particular reason. And in the future, the budget amendment will actually identify with whether and how much we need to get from the general fund to pay the balance out of the street operating fund.
That's correct. Questions? No more questions. Are we ready for the vote? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of directing the Finance Director to include $175,000 in a subsequent 2018 budget amendment for the Tibbetts Creek Bridge Reinforcement Project utilizing the street operating fund, and authorizing the administration to enter into design and construction contracts for the Tibbetts Creek Bridge Reinforcement Project, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, Sheldon. Next item under regular business this evening is EB 7653, inter-local agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue per and polyfluoralkyl substances, PFAS for short, field study. This is for an authorization, and this is the first time this Agenda Bill has been before council. We're going to keep Sheldon Lin up at the DAS, Public Works Engineering Director, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Pauley. So the policy question with this Agenda Bill is, shall the council enter into an inter-local agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue for the purpose of sharing the cost and performing field studies related to PFAS in the Valet Aquifer? The administration's recommending yes. The city should enter into that inter-local agreement. I'm going to go through a little bit of background about, you know, what brought us here. I'm going to talk about the scope of work that's associated with the field studies, and then I'm going to talk about the elements in the inter-local agreement. In 2015, the city discovered PFAS within its well number four. By 2016, the city council had taken action to fund treatment, and the treatment had been designed and installed, resulting in a complete removal of PFAS from the well number four water supply. Since that time, the city has continued to test the water to make sure that the water supply is free of to make sure that the water supply is free of PFAS. In addition to that, further hydrogeologic investigations were authorized and funded by the city council. As shown on the graphic here from a Geosintech report and presentation earlier provided to city council, it shows that there was a plume identified of PFAS that extended northward from approximately the Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters north to the well number four area. Subsequent to this, Eastside Fire and Rescue has also identified other areas in the valley where firefighting foam has historically been used for training at other locations other than the headquarters. Firefighting foam is one of the suspected ways in which the PFAS has gotten into the aquifer has been the use of firefighting foam. Since that time, in 2017 and 18, a partnership developed. The partnership was between Eastside Fire and Rescue, the City of Issaquah, and the Department of Ecology. Within that partnership, the partners developed a scope of work to further investigate the known potential source and investigate other potential sources for the plume. Also, we provided funding for this scope of work as well. And we've negotiated interlocal agreements and agency agreements on how the funds will be used. The scope of work. The scope of work includes three areas in general sense. There's one area owned by the school district up here between Holly, or just south of Holly Street. There's the Eastside Fire and Rescue property down here. And then there's an area over here by City Hall, the old fire station sites in general vicinity of them, that were also identified as areas that had previous use of the firefighting foam for practice purposes. As part of the scope of work, there's gonna be shallow soil sampling and testing. There's gonna be some groundwater sampling and testing, which also includes the installation of monitoring wells. And each of those activities are gonna be on all three, in all three areas. The interlocal agreement, which is what this agenda bill is about, is about a partnership. It identified the consultant's scope of work, which I just spoke about in brief summary. It provides for project management, where Eastside Fire and Rescue is responsible for the direct contract management with the consulting firm that's gonna be doing the field work. There's also an executive committee that's formed. The executive committee is comprised of the chief. It's comprised of an ecology person, the mayor, as well as the interim city administrator. It also provides for cost sharing. The cost sharing identifies that there are two, there's one grant from the Department of Commerce, which the city council already accepted back on June 18 through Agenda Bill 7630. The other funds that are outside and not part of City of Issaquah or Eastside Fire and Rescue are ecology funds. Those are the two pots of money that will be used first. Once those funds are used up, the City of Issaquah and Eastside Fire and Rescue will split the costs evenly between the two parties. Those are essentially the basic tenets of the interlocal agreement. The recommendation is to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the interlocal agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue for the PFAS field study project.
Thank you, Sheldon. Are there any questions? No questions. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the interlocal agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue for the PFAS field study project.
Second? Multiple seconds. I'm going to take Batiste. Okay, discussion? Let's remember Ray.
So it's interesting, sitting on the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board and having dealt with the same interlocal agreement from the other side of the equation. This is a really good deal for the City of Issaquah. This is an opportu, I mean, hats off to Chief Clark and Mayor Polly for breaking a deal that brings in the money from ecology and the money from commerce and gets us ahead of this project. So this could have been much, much more expensive and much more damaging to the city than it's going to be because of people working together across government subdivisions and really taking this one on. So I think this is, this is one of the, from where I sit and where I sat when the EFOR board approved this, this is an easy one.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I have nearly the same comments. I just want to say thank you to Mayor Polly and Chief Clark and folks in the administration, both of those organizations who've worked very hard on this. It's been very, very collaborative and I've been very, very impressed. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Winterstein?
May have a couple of questions, depends on the answer to the first one. Has this been through committee?
This has been, no.
So why are we doing this one touch? Now, I know there've been other meetings to authorize acceptance of the money, the grant money, but this one actually has a contract in it. So this is the first time the council is seeing contract language. So why are we doing it this way?
Good question.
Mayor Polly?
Go ahead, Emily.
You're right to point out that it's one touch. That's not our preferred method, but occasionally, that's the only way that we can get business done. The time constraints on this are that we, it took some while to work out all of these agreements and the complexity of the funding arrangements. And there were precursor steps like taking action on the acceptance of the grant, et cetera. And working out the scope of work took quite a bit of effort as well. And so that brings us to August, and we want to get some of the field study work done while school is out, since it's in, it's on school district property in part. So to have it go to committee and then back would prevent us from getting the work done while school is out.
So, Member Winterstein, more questions?
Well, just general comment on process. So none of that's in here. There is no explanation for the expedient manner of this. And at least, if it's here, I didn't see that. And I would think generally for a contract, that I would much prefer that, and I would expect that contract language does have the chance for a full committee review. I just, this is, essentially, when we get a bill like this, where nobody on council has scrutinized in a meeting and had any presentation or conversation about contract language, we're essentially running a committee meeting here, not regular business. We really should be going through this and have a conversation about the details. Unfortunately, you know, I'm not prepared to do that. Honestly, before this evening, I did assume that we were gonna hear from the committee that reviewed that, because I know I wasn't on a committee that reviewed that. So I think this process, it is not a comment at all about what we're trying to do. I understand about timing, I understand trying to take advantage of windows when things are most properly, you know, done best. But I think as a matter of practice as a city, if we're gonna ask the council to approve contract language, even with an existing partner and trusted partner as EFOR, we are a member of EFOR, I would still think it's appropriate process rather than a one-touch that goes through the committee route.
Thank you, Councilmember Winterstein. Are there any other questions or discussion? I will confirm that Councilmember Winterstein is correct, that the "why now" should be in the agenda bill. So that was a good catch. Thank you for pointing that out. I've been told by a friend that it is in there somewhere, but agreed. It is not a normal process, not a typical process for us. Is there any other discussion or comments?
Yeah, one more, just one more.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Because the other unusual thing about this that did get my attention about this is that the language in front of us is, we actually have a photocopy of the contract and it's already signed by the chief from the, from the Eastside Fire and Rescue. And generally, so that's an unusual process. This is, we're way out in front of the normal process in this one. I just, I just want to, I want to, you know, add that piece of information to the public record. Thank you.
I got a little heads up there from the city administrator. Can you talk about the contract piece of it, whether or not it's typical to have the other party sign in advance?
Sure. It just so happened that they've had their business meetings ahead of ours. And so it's the most, most recent. We could have given you one without a signature, but the fact of the matter is, it has, Chief Clark has been authorized to sign it and has signed it. It won't be executed until, of course, you've given your authorization and the mayor has signed it. And I, just, just one more point of clarification. I hear your point, and we will strive to bring contracts in front of you so that they have opportunities to go to committee, although that's not technically spelled out in our policy as a requirement, but it is good practice. And I will say, we alluded to the fact that this would be coming before you when we brought the Commerce Grant forward in June and have had some conversation with council leadership about the fact that there was a quick turnaround and this would be one-touch. So we've made, we've made efforts to try to explain why this deviates somewhat from what has been our past practice.
All right, thank you.
Excellent clarification. Any other comments or questions, or are we ready for the vote? Looks like we are ready for the vote. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute the interlocal agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue for the PFAS field study project, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is opposed? That passes unanimously. The next and last item on our regular business agenda this evening is AB 7662, Support for City Rule in Open Space Acquisition. This is requesting approval. This is the first time this agenda bill has been before council, and I would like to invite Jeff Watling, our director of Parks and Recreation, to introduce this item.
Mayor, thank you. Good evening, council. I'll be quick. Councilmembers Goodman, Hunt, and Ray sought to bring forward a resolution to state support of the open space acquisition efforts on the Bergsma properties. Those council members approached staff to assist in drafting the resolution, forgive me, to ensure that it's consistent with the exploratory work that's currently underway. This collective work between staff and council produced the draft that is before you. Now I will turn it over to those council members to further introduce this resolution for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. So we have a couple of options here. We can have somebody make a motion and then go to questions, discussion, deliberation. Or we can have the three council members who proposed this resolution speak beforehand. Is there any preference for process? If not, I would suggest.
Just make a motion and.
I suggest we make a motion. Thank you.
Sure, I'll make a motion. I would move to approve Resolution Number 2018-13 in support of open space acquisition efforts on the Bergsma properties.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. So for me, the inspiration for this resolution came directly from the Save Cougar Mountain organization. And I'll speak to that in just a minute. But first of all, I want to clarify that there are three sponsors. I think our software allows one name at the top of the agenda bill. And, but I do want to, I do want to clarify and make it clear that there are three sponsors, and I want to thank councilmembers Ray and Hunt for all of your work on this. And I also want to thank Jeff Watling and Emily Moon for all of your efforts in preparing that resolution. So the Save Cougar Mountain folks have been coming to this council, our council meetings since early 2017, to tell us their concerns about the proposed Bergsma development. By my count, that's more than 16 months. It's about almost a year and a half. I believe that most of us council members have been talking with folks from that group. And the last time I met with them, just a few weeks ago, I was struck by some of their comments. First was how long they have been coming to speak before us. And like I said, it's almost a year and a half. But we never speak in return because the practice is, you, public members can come, talk to the council during audience comments, and it's your opportunity to tell us how you feel about something and your opinion about something. So what happens is, they don't, the Save Cougar Mountain folks have not heard from us in return as a council. The mayor does provide periodic reports out about the Bergsma activities, but the council, which is a completely different branch of municipal government, has not responded. And that feels very wrong to me. Reason this feels wrong to me is because we, the policymakers, do know that the administration is working with Trust for Public Lands, which has already been talked about publicly. And as the resolution states, quote, "Whereas a current partnership with the Trust for Public Lands provides the opportunity to explore acquisition options for all or a portion of the Bergsma properties." Mayor has provided several updates, but the council has said nothing about whether it even supports the administration's efforts. Second, as the resolution states, "It is anticipated that any funding package would include city, regional, and other funding sources." But this property is in our city, so this council needs to take a leadership role and send a strong message that we support these efforts. The administration has a role, but so do we, and so far, we have been completely silent. Third, transparency. With this resolution, we become transparent about what our intentions are. We intend to consider acquiring the property. With that transparency, the public now knows that this council expects to consider a property acquisition, and the public can weigh in accordingly. We should have as much engagement on this as possible, not the least amount possible. David Kapler actually summed up how I feel pretty well about the significance of this resolution in an email. And since I don't think I can say it any better, I will just read his very short email. He said, "We have been really pleased to see the cooperation going on between the city, county, and Trust for Public Land. Many of the strong supporters of this acquisition are new to the process of park and open space acquisition. This resolution should give them some assurance that the process is working and progress is being made. For those of us involved in this kind of process, in the past, we know specific details of the negotiations are not public and are best not being public until a resolution between parties is agreed on. For those people new to the process, this can be quite frustrating, but you and your partners are on the right path," end quote. I completely agree that we are on the right path. And I think it's time that we say that publicly. So that's why, that's where the inspiration came from, and that's the reason that I co-sponsored this resolution. But I also want to say thank you very much to the Save Cougar Mountain members who have just really blown me away with your dedication, effort, and countless hours. I am very impressed and very grateful that you all care so much about our community. You are making a difference, and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I'm looking over at the other two sponsors, and Councilmember Hunt, got her hand up first.
Thank you. So I believe in the intrinsic spiritual value of open space and of open space in its natural state. I think that based on the approximately 100 emails that we've received in the last few days, a lot of our community feels the same way. That said, I don't think that this is the time to make that speech. Hopefully, there will be a time to make that speech. But I do think, I do think that this is a companion statement to what the mayor has already made public, which is that the city is exploring the possibility of an acquisition. And we have not yet made our counterstatement. And so this, to me, this resolution serves as a counterstatement, saying that the city is exploring the acquisition and the council is in support of that exploration as well and of that process. So specific to the resolution itself, there's a number of whereas statements that set the current context. And then there's the sections at the end, which are the part about, now therefore, the council resolves, which would be what we resolve to do should this pass. And I think that the whereas statements, they, they say that Issaquah is defined by our forested hillsides and that we have this history of open space acquisition. We have this history of conservation. I think this path that we are acknowledging, we are on right now with exploring an open space acquisition, is a path that we, as a city, have been on for a long time. It's also pointed out that this is by Harvey Manning Park. So I think that there's a history of support for open space acquisition. There's a history of understanding the importance of our forested landscape and of preserving that and of hiking and of staying the trailhead city. I, I think in the sections that come after the "now therefore we resolve", it is clear that that we are on a path, and we are exploring partnerships. We, if we are exploring partnerships, I think we need to make it clear that we are in support of this potential. Potential being the capacity to turn into something, and I think that this does have the capacity to turn into something. I think that we should be very clear that we are in support of the city's efforts, and that this is an important process, and that we, as council, are engaged. I, I also want to say that I think this is a path, and we, with this resolution, as I see it, we are acknowledging that we are on a path, and we're also taking a small step on that path, or that hike to an unknown destination, and I believe that it's a step in the right direction. I will be supporting this.
Thank you, councilmember Hunt. Would our third cosponsor like to...
Absolutely. I was very excited to be able to work with councilmembers Goodman and Hunt to put together this resolution, and my primary objective was to say to all the people that, for 16 months have been coming to council meetings, that we've heard you, and we understand you, and that we see the value in what you're talking about. The, Issaquah is defined by its wooded hillsides, and this parcel of land happens to be at the gateway into Issaquah, and it's one of the first things you see, and it sets the tone for the future of how the city is going to evolve. And one of the things that I'm struck with, as I read all hundred-and-some-odd emails that came in, was the breadth of where people are coming from. So, there are a number of people who, who emailed us about this resolution, who live here in Issaquah, and who the eight of us up here work for. But, there's also a lot of regional support. There were people in Seattle, there was someone from British Columbia, so there's a lot of regional support here. And this is also really important for us to go on the record and say, look, we, we're not saying we're going to do this, but we're saying we are open to exploring it, and that there's our, there are steps being taken. And I think this is really important for us to demonstrate to our partners, such as King County and the state of Washington, and other funder, and other potential funders, that we are committed to making something happen, that's, if we can make something happen. And the level of regional support really lends, lends some credence to discussions that have happened with the King County Council and with people in the state of Washington. So, I think this is an important first step. I'm just stealing your hiking analogy. This is, this is a first step on a very long journey, but it's a necessary and important first step.
Thank you, councilmember Ray. Other councilmembers? It's member Winterstein.
Thank you. I appreciate Stacy mentioning Mr. Kapler's email, because he could actually put voice to something that makes this topic a little bit awkward for, at least myself, sitting up here in the dais, because as David Kapler said, is he, his comment, I'm going to reread it. For those who, of us involved with this kind of process in the past, we know specific details of the negotiations are not public, and are best not being public until the resolution between the parties is agreed upon. So, what's really odd, for, for me at least, is, is what you, we've heard Mayor Polly talk about in terms of updates with the Trust for Public Land. Well, what we're saying tonight is, you know, this is material we've covered in executive session, and we don't talk about executive session. So, we're silent. That's kind of, that's protocol. And so, that's the odd word. 16 months, lots of emails, phone calls, meetings as well. And so, yeah, that communication's been going on, but it's been kind of odd from this side as well, because under just the rules of executive session. So, this is, this is a very unique step in my seven years on the council, where a topic that previously had only ever been executive session material is now kind of, is being brought forward this way. Now, there's other important information that I can't disclose in executive session that we discussed, and that's where it shall remain, but that's part of the awkwardness of this as well. We've only talked about it in executive session. So, to help, I'm just going to add a little bit more to Mr. Kapler's emails, that that kind of dynamic is going on as well. So, and then back, I do have one little nit about the language in the resolution, and the whereas clause on the top, the first whereas clause on the second page, it currently says, "Whereas the Burgsma properties comprise approximately 46 acres of forested hillside with slope ranging from 10% to 80%, containing six wetlands, three streams, and associated Just for, this is a nit, it does, that, that phrase in there, "with slope ranging from 10% to 80%," I think you read that, and you think that the entire land is sloped. There is some, there's a bench, especially up high, and I think, I would, I'm going to propose, what we amend this language just to be more accurate, and, and I'm going to propose that, make a proposal to amend this whereas clause, to replace the phrase, "with slope ranging from 10% to 80%," replace it with the phrase, "much of, much of it steeply sloped with some inclines up to 80%." Is that a...
I'm actually just writing it down, but yes, that sounds like it's going to be amended.
I'm proposing a formal amendment to...
With some up to 80%.
Yeah, so...
And councilmember Winterstein, I think that is great to propose the change and have everybody vote on it. Are you okay with the others going through their thought process first, or do you want to put the amendment on the table right now? Because we still haven't heard from three councilmembers.
I've made a motion.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to amend the language to replace the description of the slope with "much of it steeply..." Oh, sorry. Actually, Paul, you're going to have to read it, because I didn't write it down correctly.
Okay, sure. So, it currently says, "with slope ranging from 10% to 80%."
Okay.
And I propose, the, the motion is to replace that language with "much of it steeply sloped with some inclines up to 80%." It'll small change.
Councilmember Goodman.
I would ask Director Watling if he has, I mean, is it still, is it accurate?
Yes, I would say so.
I'm sorry, what, is what accurate?
The proposed.
The proposed or as written?
Proposed change.
Okay.
Any discussion? Questions? And I'll call for a vote. It's changing the language in the paragraph on the top of page two, Paul?
The first whereas on page two.
First whereas, and using replacement language, "much of it steeply sloped with..."
Some inclines.
Of the, I'm going to have to read it, get Tisha to read it, thanks.
Sure. Replacing the phrase "with slope ranging from 10% to 80%" with "much of it steeply sloped with some inclines up to 80%."
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here's unanimously. And there are still a couple of councilmembers we have not heard from. Councilmember Ramos.
I just like to thank a number of folks here, first, my three councilmembers that brought this resolution forward. Thank you for the work on that, and thank the Save Cougar Mountain folks. I remember our first meeting a long time ago, probably 16 months ago, the first discussions on this, and, and where we're going with it, and how that process works, and so forth. And I, I really do believe this is the right way to go. It is a little different, but we are publicly going to say that what we've been doing, and what we're desiring to get to, we're not, we haven't made a commitment, because you can't do that yet, but it says publicly that this is what we'd like to do. Because I think it is important, as discussed 16 months ago with you, is that, that is our view shed coming in. It is a critical piece that is very important, and so, it's worth saying that it is important, and that's, that is our desire. So, the, the leadership of Save Cougar Mountain folks, thank you, and our three councilmembers that, that said, let's put this back to, on the, stated clearly, so no one wonders where the council is on this, and it just won't be private discussions. So, thank everybody for all that, and I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Two more councilmembers. Council President Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have, I have four points to make. The first is, I want to, I want to put this in the historical context, because, you know, for folks for whom this is their, their first time with an issue like this in front of the city, I want to assure people that this city has a strong commitment to preserving open space. And to give an example, in 1998, 10% of the city was open space, in 2008, 19.7%, and today it's at 21%. And so, we continue, this is within the context of a, of a large commitment to preserving open space, as has been mentioned, is identified as one of the key features of the city. So, I'm going to be a yes tonight, but I want to be super honest. The price tag matters, and we're in a weird situation, as councilmember Winterstein mentioned. We can't discuss anything that's been held in executive session, but let me mention two numbers that I'm confident were not discussed in, in executive session. If this, if somebody were to come to us and say, "This is going to cost the city $4.95", we would all say yes, and if someone came to the city and said, "This is going to cost us $2 billion," we would say no. So, so the number is somewhere between there. How do you, how do you talk about comparable values? We were lucky enough, in some of our earlier open space acquisitions, Park Point, we managed to do somehow, to get 100 acres for no dollars out of pocket, although it represented development in the Highland, additional development in the Highlands. Hilltop, which we heard a little bit about earlier this evening, was $800,000 for 16 acres. Probably, who knows, but perhaps a dollar value that's closer to conversations. The pool renovation cost us $5 million, and the pool renovation, we got that out of a bond, right? So, we brought that before the public, and we said, "We'd like to do this," and the public voted on that. The other half of that bond went to Confluence Park, which we all know and love. So, so those are some, those are some numbers that are out there on existing things for the city benefit that we have done in the past. There's going to need to be a really robust discussion before we vote on something like this, and, I mean, not, not the vote that we're taking tonight, and I understand why we're doing that, and I'm glad that we're providing some clarity as to our thought process. But, before we make a final decision on whether to do this, as much as it's been identified as a, as a, as a super-important community value, and I don't, I'm not sure I've seen an issue that has driven this much of a response from the community in, in eight and a half years on council, we're going to need to know a couple of really critical things. The first and foremost is going to be partner commitments. We're going to need to know some of the partners that are out there that would also benefit from this, and, and have a vested interest in making sure this happens, and, and want to see trail networks expanded on Cougar Mountain and some of the other areas. We want them to step forward. We want to make sure that we understand what our financial commitment is. I'll use, I'll use, since everyone is quoting David Kapler, I will quote a David Kapler, the last vote David took, and I rec, I remember it because it was, I was taking over his seat as he was leaving council, was for the pedestrian overcrossing at exit 15. And as it happens, we committed $1 million to that project, and actually, it wound up being almost two because of risks that we didn't realize were associated with the project. So, we have to, we have to understand the risks financially associated with this. Additionally, before we get to a, a final vote, I'll want to understand potential public features of this land, and how we might integrate this in. I know we've, this is part of our parks plan, and, but I'll want to understand that, because that also is a factor in what the benefit is for the community. And finally, the financing options, and how, whatever amount it is, how we would potentially pay for that, and what the financial impacts would be, both for the community and for our ongoing efforts to address infrastructure and transportation challenges that we have as a city. So, that's all ahead of us, and so, you know, you're hearing a lot of great support tonight, and it's wonderful to be able to talk about it, but I want to be really honest that there is a, again, I will use the term robust, conversation to occur before we can get to where everybody has said they want to get to. So, I'm a yes, but want to be clear. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President Batiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll be supporting this, this evening. I, myself, am very committed to preserving open space, and I, and I think that the city really has a history in, in looking to preserve open space, and I want to say that I very much appreciate all of the comments, all of the emails that we've received, and just over time, all of the work that has been done by the Save Cougar Mountain Group. I have had an opportunity to meet with the Save Cougar Mountain Group, and it, it is difficult when we're in a situation where we, we can't really talk about what, what is happening, and, and being able to have this AB come forward and have some transparency with that, and looking at some of the partnerships, and being able to talk about this, I think is great. So, for that reason, I very much support this AB. I think that this is a pathway, this is a first step. This is looking at a potential acquisition. To echo some of Council President Martz's comments, we're not looking at all of the information in terms of how much this potentially would cost. We also still have, need to be looking at the, that we're taking all the appropriate measures as the AB talks about to separate this from the city's regulatory role in terms of the development application, and I think that's an important point. I want to thank the three councilmembers that have brought this forward. I think that that's really important, and I'll be supporting this bill.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
Yes, I want to express my support for this as well, and thank you to Stacy, and Chris, and Vicky. It's a very novel idea, but when you, when you think about it, it's the right thing to do. We work for the public, and we're doing work, and you want to know what we think and where we stand on something, so let us tell you. So, it, that sounds pretty simple, but it's, it does, at the same time, it's kind of novel that we're doing this. What does that tell you? But, I'm, I'm, I'm good with what we're doing, but I also have an ask, because as has already some of my colleagues here on the council, on the dais have said, what's going to happen in the future is uncertain, and part of the decision framework that we're going to be using is, is going to be about funding. And, and so, we have something out there called our, our CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan. And we have a, we just adopted it last year, we've made some, we're going, it's going to be revised on a regular basis, but that is, that is the framework in which, at least the lens that I'm going to look at this, because it calls, it talks about what we want to do with acquisition of land of open space. It talks about what we want to do with transportation dollars. It, it talks about what we want to do with just the equipment to maintain the streets and the roads around here, all those things that require capital or money to get our hands on to. And we have to balance, our wish list is actually quite large, so if we add something more, like an acquisition like this, whatever that dollar amount is, we put that into that, you know, we're going to have to either take away from something else, or find a new funding source, and that's, that's the process what we're going to have to go through. So, I would, I would challenge everybody who supports this, and the message on support for open space, got it, and I think it's unanimous here as well, no doubt about that. The next challenge for the council is going to be, how, should this come forward, and what form it comes forward, should this come forward, is how would we pay for that? Because it's not, it's not obvious, it's not currently in our plan. So, understanding that, and, and contributing as members of the public, as our constituents, to that decision process that we're making, and I'll gladly talk with anybody more about that, so you can help me better understand that part of how we do budgeting and how we come up with funding, because I very much would, I would love it if there was a future meeting, or two, or 10, where, where people come to the dais and said, "You know, I've studied this part of your capital plan, and I see you have an emphasis over here, my recommendation might be something like this." That would be great input, because a lot of those decisions do reflect our values, but some of them are, you know, it's going to be a push. We value everything that's on the docket there, but we're going to have to trade something off, maybe. That would be great input to get, as, because that's going to be the next really difficult, should we get to that point. That's going to be a difficult type decision we have to be making. So, thank you for, and the last thing I'll say also about the Save Cougar Mountain Group, I was, I had to smile this evening, because after the first public comment somebody made and in favor of this motion, Mayor Polly said, "Okay, I see about three-quarters of the hands are up, and I realized I wasn't looking up yet, and I didn't hear a single sound out of the audience, but then I looked, and three-quarters of the hands were up. I go, my gosh, you guys are so quiet. That's just amazing. You follow these instructions perfectly. You're letting us know that more people support this, and you didn't even make a noise." I mean, I mean, that was... I mean, I mean, that was, it was kind of amazing. So I, I mean, and that's what happens. You've been part of the process, you've been participating with this and, and coming along and pushing us as well, and I'm, I'm making an ask to, to come further in those next stages with us as well with the funding question. Thank you.
Is there any, oh, Councilmember Hunt?
I have a question, and this is getting at the sort of robust conversations, I think, that Council President Martz alluded to. So the question is for Jeff. Will there be community engagement opportunities, opportunities for the community to learn about a potential acquisition prior to any final decision that would be taken by council?
Yes, yes. Should this sensitive exploratory work that, that is, that is happening right now, should it lead to a specific acquisition opportunity? I definitely would see public outreach, there's an opportunity for public outreach to occur before you make a final decision. In fact, I would reference the last sentence of section one. That last sentence speaks to and outlines kind of this foreshadows, speaking optimistically, a, a moment when this exploratory work produces some specifics, a specific opportunity. What's the specific size and scale? What's the specific funding strategy? But in that, in that moment, it's outlining, I think there's opportunity for that robust conversation to be happening, to get some public outreach, both to inform the community but also get some feedback, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If there is no further discussion, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2018-13 in support of open space acquisition efforts on the Bergsma property signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda this evening is good of the order. Does anybody have anything for good of the order? Let's member Ray.
I have my biweekly shout out. So Mayor Polly mentioned that National Night Out is tomorrow, and I live in the, the Talis neighborhood, and we are having a, a full-blown National Night Out, complete with bouncy house, but that's not what I wanted to talk about. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Parks Department for working with the Talis neighborhood and getting the permitting done. I wanted to do a shout out to the Police Department, who's not here, for being there and representing and engaging with the community, and even though Eastside Fire and Rescue is not part of the city per se, definitely a shout out to our Fire Department for being there. They are always a huge draw. So it's, if you're not doing anything, it starts at 5:00, it's in Harvey Manning Park. I, I will be cooking hot dogs.
Thank you. Anything else for good of the order? I just have a little bit of a look ahead on some upcoming council meetings. August 13th, there will be a, a special council meeting at 5:30 PM. We'll be having our financial retreat, and on August 20th, there'll be a council special committee work session at 6:30 PM. The items, the potential items for the work session include a facility space study, which is for city municipal facilities, an update, an informational item on solid waste services and recycling markets. This is a information request to provide more information to council on the regional issue that is facing our part of the country right now. An update on the senior center long-term operations, and an update on the transportation concurrency model update that is occurring right now. And that's all I have for good of the order. There is no executive session this evening, so there being no further business. The meeting is adjourned at 8:54.